Okay, hi everybody, welcome to our next Gold Rush call. I'm so excited that you're here. What we're gonna start doing is really breaking down more of the nitty gritty of what your Plexus Day activities might look like, why we do those, maybe when you do those, what those might look like for you, get you into a rhythm of doing them, and also give you maybe some tools, tips, scripts, methodology behind this, so that you can help your team do this all the same. Because we've opened up this call to not only those of you who are working towards gold and senior gold, but also those of you wanting to develop gold and senior goals. And guess what? If you're working towards gold or senior gold, you should be also working to develop a gold or senior gold on your team, right? Because when we help others achieve their goals, then we're gonna achieve our goals, right? Which is so wonderful about Plexus. So, um, not only are you gonna take all this in and work on it yourself, uh, these are gonna be things that you can help pass on to somebody that you might be helping guide through some of these activities as well. And today is really gonna be focused on social media, um, because that's a wonderful place to start. We were talking about running a social selling business online, um, or a network marketing business that's largely largely done online, largely done on social media, right? We're gonna kind of start there and have a little bit of a training on the first half of the call, and then a group work session on the back half of the call. It's a really good place for brainstorming, for asking questions, um, getting more specifics, uh, all of that. So this is your place for all of these things. And, um, if you don't know me, I'm Ali Kins Sapphire Ambassador, and I have been with Plexus for about seven and a half years now. I built my business largely online. Uh, I actually, a couple months after starting Plexus, I moved away from all of my family, friends, everyone I'd ever grown up with, all of that. I basically got out of my local network and popped into this right when I started Plexus. So building locally was not really something that I could do instantly, because my entire local network was in another state, um, right when I started. So, I put a lot of value on in-person relationships, but social media has really been a free online advertising tool that I, you know, have had to learn how to really capitalize on and make the most of. And I know, um, it's something that if you're not someone who's used to advertising, marketing, selling, selling online, you know, writing good content, if that's not something that you're used to, like most of us aren't, it's a learned skill, right? So if you feel like, I don't know what to post, I don't know how to post, I don't know what words to say to people, um, I don't know how, you know, to connect with people online, that's okay, none of us did. And so we all had to learn, and it's something that you can absolutely learn too. Uh, so I feel like what I'm gonna kind of walk through tonight is basically what I've done over the last seven and a half years to grow most of my business on Facebook and Instagram. Now for me, most of my business still comes from Facebook, um, but a lot of this translates over to Instagram as well. Um, and you're gonna find yourself being able to reach more people online on social media, even though you still might have a lot of influence locally in person with people. Um, there's, you know, so many people out on the internet that you can, that you can reach because they're not geographically close to you, right? So don't write off Facebook or Instagram as something that you're just not good at. You can absolutely learn how to be good at them and do really well with Plexus by utilizing these tools. So, I'm gonna talk about social media systems and activities and kind of the methodology behind it that really, really, really worked to take advantage of these free advertising platforms that we have. And when you first start Plexus, you're gonna work with what we call your warm market, right? These are people who are already familiar with you, who you are, you have some kind of relationship with them, they trust you somewhat, right? There's a reason why you might be friends or followers, you know, of them or friends on Facebook, because you guys shared something in common in your life, right? Um, whether it's work or geographically, or a club you were a part of, or an old colleague, or went to high school together, right? You have some kind of past, um, that's drawing you together, some kind of connection. And these people are familiar with who you are, um, at least on a surface level, right? So these are people, when you first start talking about Plexus, they're instantly the people who are gonna start jumping in, they're gonna start seeing your content. Uh, maybe you see them in person, maybe they're family members, they're the earliest people to sort of jump in when you start this business. And if you're helping someone get started, these are great people to start with when they're thinking about reaching out to people to invite to an event, or reaching out to people to ask if they're interested, you know, and hearing more about Plexus, or whatever that is, right, sharing a sample with. Um, this is a really good group of people for them just to think about, and you to think about, you know, who are maybe the ten or fifteen people who are pretty close to me, are familiar with who I am, what I stand for, would, you know, trust me, and, you know, maybe connect with them first. And if you're thinking of people that might be, might fit the bill there, that you haven't talked to about Plexus yet, I highly recommend offering them a sample, inviting them to an event, reaching out to them to just ask if they're interested in learning more about Plexus. So this instant kind of closest network is good to start with, but over time, you're gonna realize that you've approached all these people about Plexus, and they're either in, and they're trying it, or they're not interested. And that's okay. And if you're someone who kind of struggles with the idea of not everybody wanting what you have to offer, a word to the wise, get over yourself. Not a hundred percent of people are gonna want Plexus. Not a hundred percent of people are gonna be interested in what you have to offer, or maybe they're just not ready for that step, right? And that's okay. We all know that every single person needs Plexus, and that's lovely, but not every single person is ready to give Plexus a try, and that's okay. So if you're on this call thinking, I've talked to everybody and I don't have a lot of people left to talk to, because I've already messaged all the people that I feel like I have a relationship with, that is totally fine. We all get to that point, and we all will hit a wall um, in our incoming potentials if we're not doing some of the things I'm gonna talk about tonight. So the key to being able to work through this is to constantly be welcoming new people into your network, building a relationship with those people, and bringing them into your warm market. That's an ongoing process, right? But it's really endless, because yes, we all started with this small warm market from wherever we started from, in the world of social media, or a world of networking, or whatever. We all start with a certain size, and at some point, we kind of have run through that, right? So we need to expand that group, grow in relationship with them, and bring them closer to us, right? So that is the whole idea of what we can do online, and it's a constant process. And the things that you wanna be doing, I'm gonna go through tonight and show you how to always be doing those things, so you never run out of list of people to contact, people to connect with, all of that. But where we're gonna start is, in order to do that and bring people into this, you know, closer, warmer network, we must know who our audience is, and be constantly, you know, growing our network with people that are gonna relate mostly to us. And we need to be able to add value to those people and relate to those people, because they're gonna be watching our feed, they're gonna be watching our stories, and we want to provide them something to engage with, something to find interest in, something to learn from, right? Our content should allow our network to come to understand who we are, maybe like us as a person, like someone you'd be friends with in real life, kind of thing, and be able to trust us, right? Show that we're somebody who's dependable and trustworthy, and worthy of taking a chance on, right? That we want them to know that we are gonna be a genuine friend to them, who cares about them and their wellness, and they can be comfortable and confident doing business with us, right? And that can be done virtually, okay? Uh, it really, really can. And so what we're gonna do a little bit tonight, and if you did the, um, IPA last week that I put together, you have had a little bit of taste of this already, but it's a really good little workshop to go through, um, on a pretty ongoing basis, because you change as a person, you go through different phases, um, different seasons in your life. So revisiting who your target customer is, is highly critical to your success in your online um, marketing or, you know, content distribution, because this is most likely gonna be someone with many of your same interests, right? And maybe from season to season, that kind of changes, but they have similarities with you, similar values to you, and they probably have many of the same pain points that you did before you joined Plexus. So if you have a notebook or a piece of paper, even if you did this last week, um, in our IPA, I'd love for you to do this again. And just as I'm talking, jot down, you know, imagine the type of person that you and your social media content would relate to most, or that you want it to relate to most, right? Or the type of person you would love to have as a business partner, right? Just the qualities and characteristics that you would love for that person to have. Um, maybe jot down their age group, right? What are their interests? What are their hobbies? What is their family structure like? What is their lifestyle like? Um, what are their values, right? Just to, you know, maybe a couple key points for each thing. I have this written down in the front of my planner, that's literally sitting right here. I have it on the first, like, one of the first few pages of my planner. And when I'm writing content, I keep this in mind. And I also have things written about what their pain points are. What are they struggling with in their health? What are they struggling with in their finances? What concerns do they have in their daily life? What stressors do they have? What causes them worry? Right? What do they stay up all night Googling? Right? What's kind of the next big thing going on in their life? That sort of stuff gears our content, and you can spend, you know, as long as you want on this exercise. Um, but we're getting a really, really clear picture of who this person is, is going to help you keep in mind the type of people you wanna add into your network, right? And guide how you craft your content, and how you send messages, what you say, who you send messages to, right? And I would love to say that you, each one of us here, are gonna be able to advertise and market and share Plexus with everyone and every, anyone and everybody, um, which we could, but most likely, each one of our messaging is gonna resonate with a different group of people. And that's okay. And that's actually beautiful, because none of us are in competition with one another, because people are gonna relate to separate people for different things, and different relationship reasons, right? So my content, as, you know, a mid-thirties mom of two little boys who are starting their baseball journey this spring, like, all of a sudden, I'm a baseball mom as of a week, right? I don't even know what that looked like before now. And so that messaging is gonna feel very different than a lot of yours, right? So just remember that when crafting your content, because this is the person that's gonna find it easiest to relate to you. This is the person that will be most likely interested in everything you have to share, right, and all of your interests. And you'll often hear us call this your ideal customer avatar, right? Or ICA, I'll refer to it as ICA, um, for the rest of this evening, and you might see that in IPA challenges and stuff. Um, but it's important to have a thorough understanding of this, so you can build your network with those people, and be able to build a strong relationship with those people. There's a reason why I'm not out there friending a bunch of, like, twenty-something guys who do CrossFit, right? I am not a twenty-something male doing CrossFit, so I'm never going to friend those people on Facebook and expect them to resonate with my content, right? So you have to be really strategic about that. So it's important to be adding new faces to your network all the time, new friends on Facebook, new followers on Instagram, new people you're meeting in person. And when you don't, um, you're gonna find yourself having gone through that warm market of people you already have a relationship with, and, um, you know, helping those people interested get started, but then after a while, you're left with a bunch of people who aren't interested in Plexus yet, right? So it feels like your content is landing on deaf ears. It might be, it might be, right? Your just, your network is full of the wrong people, um, or the people that aren't right for your business in this season. So, um, we don't wanna be posting and reaching out to the same uninterested people over and over again with no results, right? Um, bringing new people in is vital to your business growth. And I have, um, done this very largely with interest groups on Facebook. I have joined a few interest groups that, um, align with, you know, my values, my interests, and I'm really active in there. I ask a lot of questions in there, I answer other people's stuff in there. But every time I ask, ask a question in there, um, and I get some really good responses, I spark up a little conversation in the replies and send those people a friend request. Because if they're interested and have information on something I'm also interested in and asking a question about, they're probably someone who meets some of the criteria of my ICA, right? So if you're not in a few interest groups, um, on Facebook, that you can really genuinely find value in and interact in, I would highly recommend joining some of those. Um, now, I never mentioned Plexus in any of these. I'm just there to meet people that I would love to have on my team, I'd love to be friends with in real life, I would love to go to convention with someday, right? I just wanna make connections, right? But this also can be true for, um, seeking out, you know, Instagram profiles on, with hashtags, or finding organizations, influencers, you know, companies that you really like. Are there people also following them that would meet your ICA, right? Can you start following them and build a relationship like that? Um, in-person community organizations, um, or you can also use, you know, suggested profiles on Instagram and Facebook. Sometimes those align with your ICA, sometimes they don't. Sometimes it's more geographically suggested, suggested more than actually interest-based. So just be careful there that you're not filling your feed with a bunch of people that aren't actually relating to your content. Um, but find people that are fans of the things that you're a fan of, right? And once we have them in our network, then in order to help these people build trust in us, what we need to do is a few things that I'm gonna walk through. First, we wanna make sure our profile is one that we would be proud of if someone came across it, and that is their first impression of us, right? I know that when I first started Plexus, maybe my header photo was a little odd, and my profile picture wasn't so great. It was like a picture of one of my kids, right? Like, nobody needs like a baby picture as their profile picture, you know? I've been there, made the mistakes, right? I had no information in my bio, you know, I didn't have anything there. So nobody coming across my page would know anything about what I'm about. Um, but you wanna make sure that it's, your profile image is a clear photo of you, or, you know, you and your family, if that's something, um, that you're aligning yourself with, or, um, something that shows what you're interested in. And have a quick little bio of what your interests are. So if you're friending someone, they can click over to your page and see, you know, Rachel looks like a really nice person. It looks like she's also into gardening and cooking, just like me, you know? They'll kind of see what you're about, see the type of person that you are, make sure your cover photo is something that's, you know, high-quality, appropriate. Nothing, don't put any like weird profane statements on your, uh, you know, Facebook or something, or, you know, Instagram. Um, it goes along with your interests, right? It's displayed correctly, all of that. Um, I think it helps sometimes to have the same image on Instagram and Facebook, so people can find you and connect. That's also kind of a little tip there. So the first thing, when people come to your page, make sure it's what you want your first impression to be, right? So just check that. Um, visit it from, you know, your husband's phone, your friend's phone, and be like, okay, if someone clicked over, what would they see? What does my profile look like? Uh, would I wanna be friends with me if I saw that, you know? Um, second, and this is more of the nitty gritty, we wanna consistently share content that our ICA is interested in, and isn't just gonna scroll past. Use that ICA filter that you just created to guide what you share, and think, if I were scrolling, and somebody else posted this on their feed or in their stories, would I stop my scroll to check it out, right? We need to catch people's attention in just a few seconds these days. And I know when you guys are mindlessly scrolling, just like I do, you know, from time to time, it's really gotta be something that is directly interesting to me, for me to stop on it, and use my time reading it, right? And it doesn't need to be groundbreaking content, it does not need to be, you know, the most profound thing on the internet, not at all. And I would highly encourage you not to put a lot of, um, weight on that, and a lot of pressure on yourself, to, uh, you know, come up with like the world's best content. Really, showing up online every single day is one of the most important things you can show people, um, when you're saying, I'm open for business. I am present, I am consistent, I'm serious about this, I'm confident in what I have to offer. Um, I'm a trustworthy, loyal person, right? Just showing up is gonna set you leaps and bounds ahead of everybody else online, because most people are passive scrollers. They are. And then most people spend their time just passively scrolling feeds. And for a lot of people, if it's, you know, out of sight, out of mind, so if you're not posting just personal content or Plexus content, people are not thinking about you as often as they think you're, you're, you think they're thinking about you, okay? People are so worried about their own lives, they, I genuinely cannot say this enough, they're not really thinking about you, and they don't care that much about your content. So don't overthink it, we're all thinking about ourselves, okay? Um, and if you could just post, you know, a personal post and a Plexus post, you know, each day, or a couple personal posts and a Plexus post, um, you're in good shape, you're really in good shape. And for a lot of us, that is a habit that we had to form. So it's okay if you're going from not a lot of social media activity to all of a sudden trying to be like a daily present, you know, person online. That's hard, that's a habit that you're gonna have to develop, right? I know when I started, I had an alarm that went off on my phone morning and night, and it just reminded me to, to post something online. And I got into the rhythm of taking photos all the time, all the time. Anytime I had a product, anytime I was with my kids, anytime I was with my husband, anytime I felt like taking a selfie, because it was sunny outside, and it was a beautiful day, like, I just started taking pictures all the time. And so I had a database of photos all the time to pull from. So if you need to set reminders, set reminders. If you need to start snapping pictures here, there, and everywhere, do it. So you don't feel like you're sitting there with a lack of things to post. Um, but the thing is, you can't just post like a couple times per week, and think people are gonna be able to develop a connection with you, let alone get to know about Plexus, and remember that you even sell it, okay? And I know that that might be like a truth bomb for some people, um, but that's the way that it is. That's why when you turn on the TV, you see the same commercials over and over and over again. Advertising works for a reason, the human brain functions in a certain way. We need repeated exposure often to come around to the idea that maybe Plexus is something that we're interested, and then we start seeing, I wonder what it could help us with, and then we're open to learning about how it can help us, you know, like, it's a total process. And if we think we're just gonna have a one-off post and all people are gonna come running, um, that's just not gonna fly, right? So really commit to saying, my doors are open for business every single day. That's basically what your social media feed is, okay? We're a social media obsessed society now. And as much as you, you know, may or may not want to be online all the time, which you don't need to be online all the time, what I mean is, like, be posting something every day, if you feel like, I don't know, do people really wanna see this? I'm bugging people, whatever. People are so obsessed with their own lives, they could care less about your lives. Like, really, do not worry about what other people think. Um, you are here to show that you have something of value to offer others, to enhance their quality of life, right? If you believe in that, and you feel strongly about that, I imagine you do, because you're here, um, and you believe in this opportunity, then this is your free storefront, right? Let's make the most of that. And so we wanna be presenting value-driven content. That doesn't mean we constantly need to have like the world's best advice, right? Um, it just means in our personal and Plexus posts and stories, it's stuff that our ICA can interact with, or feels like they wanna engage with, or feels like they can relate to, or maybe it makes them feel seen, or maybe it makes them laugh, or maybe it's a, like a life hack that they never thought of. Or, uh, you know, maybe it's something really nostalgic for them, that makes them feel some type of positive emotion, right? All of that is value. And so what you really wanna do is just generate interest, and having them generate interest in who you are and what you stand for, and, um, strengthen that relationship, so that you can take that existing network of people that is really unfamiliar to you, and, and, you know, you're unfamiliar to them, and bring them in and show them, this is what I'm all about, I'm a trustworthy person, um, let's build this relationship, you know, and have fun all around it. And at the end of this call, we're gonna write some content together. So just make sure you have some things written down about your ICA to guide that activity, even if it's a few keywords, just, um, right now, to kind of jot down the people that you might be thinking of, um, because we're gonna go through that together a little bit later. And also remember that stories, you know, the little bubble, little circle that's at the top of, um, your social media feeds, those are most of the time watched by a largely different group of people each day. So the people that might be scrolling your feed, excuse me, and the people who might be clicking through your stories, uh, are a really different pack of people a lot of the time, like, there's a little bit of crossover, um, but some people are like stories people, and some people are feed people, right? Um, that's just kind of the way that it goes. So if you're not using stories, um, don't stress about it, because stories are more of the unpolished, behind-the-scenes life kind of things. Um, that's why it disappears in the day, you know, in twenty-four hours, it's gone. So don't stress over, don't overthink it. Um, nobody wants perfection, and honestly, perfection isn't relatable anyway. Um, people wanna see others live life like they do, right? Like a reality show, that's why they're so popular, and they've been around forever. People wanna see other people like them, um, that make mistakes and have a messy house, and don't wear makeup all the time, and kids do crazy stuff, and, you know, make a mess, and all the things, that's what people wanna see, right? So if you're trying to hide those things and act like you don't have those things in your life, um, I would recommend not be, I would recommend actually, you know, showing that stuff and not be afraid to show that stuff, because that's gonna be the most relatable part of you, really. And not many people have stories available every single day, all day. So again, just showing up daily is gonna make a huge, huge difference for your relevance, and the ability for people to, um, develop a relationship with you. So that's sort of, um, what I want you to think about in how often you're sharing online. Try to put something, like a few things in your story every day, so that you hit that group of people, uh, and they get used to seeing you in your stories, and they're familiar with who you are. And try to put something personal up, something Plexus up, most days of the week. Um, I know that I do, like, my Plexus Day activities, which we talked about on the last call, um, I do those five days a week. And on weekends, I'm usually unplugged, but whatever that looks like for you, um, just commit to that and be consistent, right? So you're putting out your content, the flip side of that is, we need to be engaging with the content of the people in our network. Because we want them to see that we value them, we value what they share, we're genuinely interested in getting to know them, um, and it actually strengthens the algorithm. So that means that once I, you know, comment on Janice's post, Facebook or Instagram is gonna say, hey, Janice and Ally know each other. I might as well start showing more of Ally's stuff to Janice, because it looks like they're friends, right? So, social media learns your connections and starts showing more of your stuff to them. Okay, so not only is it strengthening your relationship, it's strengthening the algorithm in your favor, so that you will have more exposure to the people that you are engaging with. And engaging means to comment on their posts or message them through their stories with something, you know, valuable, sincere, or even better, ask a question to further the conversation, right? Um, people in general just enjoy being seen, they enjoy being valued and noticed and asked for their input. So the more often you can do this with people, the more often you're gonna build that trust. I would highly avoid making comments like, so cute, or a smiley face, or like a heart emoji, like, that's, sure, it's a comment, right? But if you really are trying to develop a relationship with that person, imagine, social media is like one big cocktail party, right? And you wanted to go cross the room and go get to know somebody that's over in the corner, like, start a conversation with them. You know, that's, that's the whole point, right? So imagine that social media, or Facebook, or Instagram, is like a big party you're at, and you're just trying to socialize and get to know people that you would or wouldn't want on your team, right? So the last thing that we're gonna discuss, uh, tonight, is gonna be personally reaching out to people about Plexus. And I am not like a super fan of messaging people that we have no relationship with. Um, I highly, highly recommend that you have spent time engaging with the content of the people that you want to present Plexus with, Plexus 2, um, and make sure that you've had some type of like back and forth, or you've built a relationship, or they know who you are, what you're about, right? Those are the people that we wanna be reaching out to, and that's why engaging, again, is so important, right? It's to build that trust, build that familiarity, builds that relationship. But sure, some people are gonna see your posts, and over time, get the courage to reach out to you, and say, hey, tell me more about that, right? Many people, though, if not most people, are gonna sit waiting, watching, reading, scrolling, wondering if Plexus is right for them, right? And when we reach out to them, we show them that we care about them, and that we're willing to do the hard thing in order for them to take a step forward, you know, in their health or their finances, right? When we just sit and post and wait, assuming that all the people are gonna come to us, we're forcing them to do the thing that's uncomfortable first, right? We're forcing them to step out of their comfort zone, and we're forcing them to offer up some pretty personal information to a stranger on the internet, right? So we have to kind of remember that when we're doing our business, that it's our job to lend a helping hand to the people in our network. That, that is what we're here for, right, is to spread hope, health, and happiness to everyone that we can. So if you are, you know, uncertain and allowing that kind of block you from connecting with people about Plexus, and you're, you know, unsure of what their response is gonna be, so it's making you uneasy, or anxious, or something, I totally get it, totally get it. Humans want to do the certain thing, right? We all want to do things where we know exactly what's gonna happen, we know what their answer is gonna be. So it's very normal to feel some hesitancy if you're reaching out to somebody and you're not sure what they're gonna say, right? So you're not, um, alone in that feeling. However, we have to remember why we're doing this, and put on that heart of service, right? And really remember that it is worth us doing the hard thing to improve the life of somebody else. So I just kind of want you to remember that, and when you're also building your business, and you have business goals, right? What do those goals represent, right? How many lives need to be changed in order for you to, you know, make these big waves that you wanna be making, and your, you know, in your finances, your family, or your future, right? Um, I like to think about it less as, you know, point breakdowns and stuff, and orders, and more people, happier people, hopeful people, joyful people, that I, you know, have the blessing of being able to help, right? So how many people can I help along this journey, right? So just kind of remember- So just kind of remember that and um, we're gonna get to work here for a little bit. And we're gonna go through some of these things um, that I was talking about. And help you guys grow your network with the right people, start creating some content that speaks to those people. Um, and start reaching out to some of those people. Um, so the first thing we're gonna do. If you're on your phone and you need to click over, um, this is totally fine. But the first thing I want you to do is go make sure that your profile is exactly how you'd want it to be. If somebody who did not know you at all came upon it. What is your first impression? Do you want it to be that? Do you need to change anything? Right? So I know that I've revisited mine a few times. I've changed, you know, profile pictures and header photos and all that. Sometimes I've rewritten my bio. Um, and maybe this is something to do later on in the evening. You'll like make a note that, you know. Change your profile picture or something, or get header image, um, or whatever you want that to be, right? Also, another thing to look at is uh, if you're on a desktop, which I am, I happen to be right now. Um, the last nine photos you were tagged in are on the left side, I guess to you, it's this way. Um, on the left side of your profile. And so sometimes I like to make sure that that's a good mixture of things that represent who I am and, you know, what I stand for. So if somebody clicks my profile, um, it's not like seven people who shared my testimony and the same picture of me holding a paint trick. Right? I like want one of my kids and one, you know, of us traveling and, you know, one of me in Texas and then one of, you know, whatever, right? I kind of make sure that um, I govern that area as well. Okay, so now that you're in there and you're over in your profile, whatever, um, what we wanna do now. Is find like three to five new friends or followers if you're on Instagram. Um, that fit your ICA. And how you're gonna do this is, first of all, if you're a part of any interest groups, awesome. Um, get into those interest groups, maybe ask a question in there real quick, um, and see who responds. You can also look and see what organizations you're a huge fan of or companies or whatever. Go to their page on Instagram or Facebook and see who's following them or um, you know, liking them or whatever. And see if you, if there's anybody you might have on Facebook. Yeah, I don't think you can friend anybody unless you have friends in common, I think. Um, so sometimes I like to see like if there's anybody who also has a um. Yeah, mutual friends with me and, and friend them because it looks like we like the same thing. Um, over on Instagram, you can look up hashtags. And follow new people that way. Um, just poke around. You can use Facebook like in Instagram suggestions if you wanna do that. Um, just, you know, kind of weed through those a little bit. Um, but I love for all of us to just add a few right now. While I'm talking. I'm gonna go do it also. Sometimes I'll go to friends of mine that um, or maybe like from community organizations that I'm a part of or was a part of. Um, who might be friends with some people that I'm not connected with online yet. And kind of look who their friends are and who I sort of have a relationship with or am interested in the same things. Um, and kind of friend some of them also. Uh, in the beginning, when I started Plexus, I did this a lot with old colleagues and old coworkers. That I just happened to never connect with online. And so I would go to someone's, you know, profile and see like, is there anyone they're friends with that I never really connected with yet? Um, and there was a lot of people, a lot of people, um, old classmates, colleagues, coworkers, um, all of that. That's a good way also. Um, but you wanna make sure their interests are similar to yours as well. So another thing on like Instagram, just kinda like I was saying on Facebook, you can go to the profile of um. A, an influencer, a company, an organization, um, any kind of professional. Uh, you know, person that you follow or whatever, and see who their follows are, who's active in commenting on their content, right? Are they people that fit your ICA that you wanna grow a relationship with? Start following them. Same goes for a lot of those companies over on Facebook too. So hopefully in all of this, you guys are in the process of adding some new people. Now, what I want you to do, if you don't have a list of people. That you are working to bring closer into your network yet. We're gonna start one, but we're not gonna spend like a ton of time starting that list. It sounds like it's a little bit of your homework. But I personally have what's called a hot twenty list. And we developed that last week. If you did the IPA, there are people who fit your ICA. And you can either scroll through your Facebook friends, your Instagram followers, your um, contacts in your phone. Uh, and develop a solid list of people that fit your ICA. That you would like to start engaging specifically on their content more. Hey, if you can think of people off the top of your head, awesome, write them down. Um, and as soon as you think of them or you find them in your friends list or your phone or your um, you know, followers list on Instagram. Hop over and engage on their content, just like, you know, their last poster too. As long as it's recent, like last couple of weeks. If it's like four months old, don't do that. Don't do that. Um, but I keep this hot twenty list and every uh, you know, week I'm going through that and engaging on their content. And if I notice that someone is not really online a lot, sure, they fit my ICA and I would love to connect with them. If they're just not somebody who's online that doesn't have content for me to engage with, I take them off of my list and I sub their name in for somebody else's. Um, so it's important to have an ongoing list to engage with on a cyclical basis, not a one-off. Um, you want your work to be focused. So you're working with, you know, a shortlist, maybe twenty to twenty-five people each week. And you're gonna do like five engagements a day for five days. And the next week, you're gonna work with that same list of people, right? And so you wanna make sure that you've got this strong connection, not just one-off comments here and there, right? So right now, as you're looking for your people in your ICA, you're going through maybe your friends list, maybe scrolling your feed, but try not to mindlessly scroll. Um, I want you to practice leaving like valuable, genuine com- um, comments, right? So ask a question, ask for clarification, ask their advice on something, give them a genuine compliment, um, something like that. And over time, as you make this list, instead of scrolling, you're gonna be able to just type in their name. In the search box or their Instagram handle, and you're gonna be able to go directly to their profile. And so you're not gonna waste time scrolling. Right? And this can be done in a matter of like three minutes, you can do five people, right? And this is something that I do a lot before I post to strengthen that algorithm in my favor. So that those people that I just commented on are hopefully gonna see my content, right? Okay, so right now I'll give you a couple more minutes to find a few people to comment on their content. And then as soon as you've left a few comments, we're gonna take a few minutes. And create some content together. And what's cool about this is that we're all gonna have the same prompts, but all of our posts are gonna look different. Which is what I love about this, like we're all so different, right? So I'm gonna drop this little note in the chat, the first one. And what it's gonna be is a personal post, so a non-Plexus post that relates to your ICA. But think of what the next big event that you have coming up in your life. Okay, that's in the chat for everybody. So like seventeen days until blah, 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 right? Why are you excited about it? Are you nervous about anything about it? Is it, what's the significance of this event to you, your family, your future, the season, right? Um, does any planning still need to get done? And then end with some kind of question, right? If people have tips about this, have they gone through this before? Or did they, you know, have they done this too? You know, that kind of thing? You really wanna ask for the engagement, if possible. I'll give you a couple of minutes to jot down ideas for that one. Even if you don't write a whole post right now, just like, what's the next big event? Why are you excited about it? Does anything stress you out about it? Just nope, nope, nope. So later on this evening or tomorrow or something, you can. Report us together. Okay. The next one is gonna be more of an engagement post, but you're gonna want this to be things that your ICA relates to. You're gonna ask a question that your ICA would want to give input on. I want you to jot down three quick ideas. Okay, so examples, what do you typically do for Mother's Day? How, like, here's more my ideas. How do you prep your kid's school lunches? How do you get grass stains out of baseball pants, right? These are things I'm like a young mom, like I'd have little kids, you've never done this before. I'm sure veteran moms have like all the tricks for getting stains out of baseball pants. I don't know. Right? So. If maybe it's related to cooking or gardening or traveling or uh. I don't know. College, like, what do you call those? Acceptance letter? Not, that's what you get back. You know what I mean? Like making, what do you call those? When you like, trying to get accepted into college? Oh my gosh, what are those called? Um. Maybe it's like tutors or something, or you, maybe you're learning a new language, maybe, I don't know, right? How about, has anyone been to Nashville? I'm going in a couple of months, right? That's a great one. So three, jot down three ideas. That your ICA would want to talk about. Okay, teeing up the next one. Hopefully you have some ideas drafted down. Next, think about something that you recently read, learned, watched. How did it make an impact on you? What are some thoughts or questions you have about it? Has your network or audience also read, learned, watched this? Right? Are you somebody who like watches TED Talks or reads fantasy fiction novels? Or listens to true crime podcasts? I don't know, right? What, what are you interested in? What kind of content do you take in? You know, what sort of media have you been exposed to or listening to, right? You're reading a certain book right now, certain show you're watching. Um, and it doesn't need to be educational. I know it's like what, you know, would you learn from it or whatever? Um, it doesn't need to be that. It can just, you know, get somebody's thoughts on it. Jason and I just watched like three different documentaries on artificial intelligence the last few days, so that's a whole thing. Very interesting. We'll talk about that later. So there's, there are many, many topics. But think about maybe jot down a couple of ideas of like what, what sort of media is in your life right now? Or what sort of information is incoming to you right now? Maybe it's like a cookbook you just found, but you super love and you wanna share about. And see if anyone's tried a recipe from it, right? So these are some personal post prompts and literally you could write reposts out of every one of these prompts. Or use these on a cyclical basis each month. So this is sort of to help you get past any writer's block when it comes to personal content. Because I know it's hard when you first, you know, start sharing or you're getting back into the groove of sharing, or maybe you've been sharing for a long time and you have no more good ideas. Yes, just recycle old ideas, but you know. It's, it's hard to think of content that is constantly gonna be valuable and I think we put a lot of pressure on ourselves. And it doesn't need to be, like I said, the most groundbreaking content ever. It just needs to be relatable to our network. So there's some personal prompts for you. And. I have a typo on this one, sorry. Um, this, uh, next thing I'm gonna do is Plexus posts. But I wrote down a list of things. This is not a complete exhaustive list. It's just the things that were on the top of my head. But to show you that a new post could be made about every single one of these topics. So here's your Plexus prompts. And it's thinking about what your life looked like, like actual tangible examples, feelings, emotions. Before Plexus and now since you have Plexus, right? So here's some Plexus ideas. So before Plexus, what was your mood like? What's an example of that? What sort of emotions did that provoke in you? How is your mood now? How does that affect your life in any way? What sort of emotions do you feel about that? Is there any gratitude there, right? And then. Sleep. How was your sleep before Plexus? And maybe none, you know, some of these might not ring true for everybody and that's fine. Um, but I think sometimes we wanna share our Plexus story and we feel like we need to tell our whole life story every time. And it does not need to be the case. So it can be something as simple as I lived for naptime when my first son was little. I remember setting up a pack and play in the middle of my living room and putting him in it with some toys. And laying down to rest my eyes on the couch because I was like, I literally physically cannot stay awake anymore. I was not a present mom. But since having Plexus in my life, I can be the joyful, energetic mom that my kids deserve. I get to take them to the park after school and play with them. I can play hide and go seek when they want me to. We get to run around outside and play laser tag. And I'm so grateful that my children have a present playful mom who gets to be there and enjoy life alongside them. Right? And you can kind of go into why you're thankful about, you know, different things. So not every. Plexus story post needs to be everything about our entire Plexus experience. And it's actually even better if it's not. I would argue that sometimes our entire story might fall unrelatable to some people, but if we can pinpoint. You know, different pockets or different categories that it's helped us with. We can help different people with different needs at different times instead of trying to mesh them all into one post, right? So even if you need to jot, jot down some ideas or the few that stand out to you. I mean, this is like a couple of weeks of posts right here, right? And next year, you guys look at your memories and you're gonna be like, what a good post I wrote on April twenty-fifth. I'm gonna post that again with a picture from last week. Nobody knows, nobody knows. It'll be great. Okay, take a couple more minutes on some post writing. Jot down what. Um, like pops out to you, feels prominent to you. Okay, the next thing we're gonna do for the last five minutes. Is reach out to some people about Plexus. And I'm so excited because I know that this makes a lot of you a little nervous probably. Uh, it gets easier, I promise. Um, Kelly is laughing at me, which is so funny because even seven and a half years later. Seven and a half years later, there are some people where I'm like, man, have I like really born into this relationship enough to make this like worthwhile? Yeah, I get like, I'm like, oh, I like still get butterflies, right? Like I'm excited. I'm excited and I have something I'm excited to share. And some people might say no, and that's a bummer sometimes, right? Like I, I get it. Um, and I share that emotion with you. However, detaching my emotional response from whatever this person is gonna say has been like the biggest game changer in my Plexus business so far. Like letting go of whatever people want to think about me. Um, which, like I said before, people do not think about you as much as you think they think about you. They have moved on with their life. If they don't want it, they're not going to respond and we're just moving on, okay? Um, but yes, being unattached from what they're going to say because some people don't want it, they don't want it. Um, we've probably all heard examples of this, but like if you were and I, and I were in Disneyland. And I pulled a pack of gum out of my purse and I was like. Hey Stephanie, do you want a piece of gum? And you're like, ah, no, nothing, sorry now. And I wouldn't be like, Stephanie hates me. Like she just doesn't want my gum and that's okay, right? So. I could chill bill with the people saying no, they don't hate you. Um, they're just like not interested in Plexus, it's totally fine. Or they read it and walked away and forgot. So take some vinyl home and send some messages. So anyway, but we're going to do, we're going to prioritize people that you, that fit your ICA. That you hopefully have been engaging with online in some format, right? So they're familiar with who you are. When they see Kelly Higginbotham, they aren't like, who is this chick? I don't know this girl, right? You don't want her, you don't want them to think that. You want them to be like, oh yeah, that's the girl with the super cute dog, right? Or whatever. Uh, right? You want them to remember who you are. Um, but we're going to invite them to our upcoming uh, gut health reset challenge. Okay, because everybody needs gut health. So I'm going to show you, I'm going to send a message that I have been sending. And I've gotten a couple of responses, so I feel like it's a good representative sample, uh, but change is how you want. Uh, it's in the chat. And, you know, if it doesn't sound like you, don't use it or change whatever you need to. Um, avoid copying and pasting. Like someone else's words all the time because it really might just not, might not sound like your verbiage and insert, you might see the parentheses there. So be careful not to just copy and paste the whole thing. Insert your ICA. So whatever that is, as a mom, as a runner, as a. I have no idea, um, whatever you want to identify yourself as, um. As a teacher, as a nurse, as a whatever, um, you know, how improving your gut health has really helped you. And why, you know, you want them to be a part of this challenge. So. We're going to take the last few minutes, everybody. Be empowered to go find people who fit your ICA that you've been engaging with. Um, that you have some familiarity or familiarity with and invite a few of them to the upcoming gut health reset. And I'm going to do this with. This is another really great reason to have that list of like your hot twenty. Um, that you've been engaging with because I often will go back and look at who I've been engaging with for a couple of months. Or a few months and reach out to those people specifically because I know that I've been developing a relationship with those people and I don't need to like think of them off the top of my head or scroll. Anything, um, so if you're just starting that, like I really encourage you to identify a list and stick with that list and cycle people through it as you reach out to them. Um, and, and just keep that going because it simplifies your like work experience and really streamlines everything for you. Reaching out to my people and I'm writing their names in, I use a paper planner. If you're an online person or a digital person, do that. I'm going to be following up with them next week. So don't forget about that later. Hey, finish up your last message.
What did you just say? Like you say, do you mention at the end, like I'm going to, if I don't hear back from you, I'll follow up again next week?
Uh, no, I just checked, I don't mention that.
Hey, listen, if you decide to ghost me, I just want you to know that I will be stalking you again next week this time.
No, I just took you again and say, hey, I just thought about you. Um, sometimes I'll say something like I was packing a sample for a friend or I just had a friend order their triplex. Um, and I thought about you and realized I didn't hear back. Did you think that this was something you're interested in learning more about? Or, you know, what were your thoughts on blah, blah, blah? Or would it be helpful for you if I sent you some more information on what the Plexus triplex is, right? Or something like that. Um, my rule of thumb is like I follow up a week later. In that kind of way, and then the very, the third time. I will usually offer them a sample or invite them to something specific. So if we have an event that Thursday or something, um, I'll do that or offer them sample. And if there's like still no response, then I'm like, okay, clearly this person is not going to respond to me. So I just let it go. Um. That's anyway, that's how I handle that. But it is seven oh one. So if anyone has any questions, clarification, comments. Um. Speak now. But thank you guys.
Can I make a comment really quick? Um, I've been doing what you're talking about, reaching out to new people and it's really awkward and uncomfortable, but. I just wanted to share a couple of things that changed what I thought about it. That made me able to do it because it was hard. And that is that, um, when I first, like, I've been doing this for a couple of years. So when I first started doing it. I like, I didn't know what I wanted to talk to people about, so it's really awkward messaging somebody when you don't know what you're going to talk to them about, you know? Because then, I mean, it's like they just won't answer you, you know? And so I've been doing what you said and going into um, special interest groups. And I found for me, like, it can't be just anything, it has to be something you're super interested in. And like some, like you said, something you're interested in, something they're interested in. And what I've found is that people. Um, they want to talk about themselves, they want to talk about what they're doing and they want to talk about what they're excited about. And lately I have super stepped up my game about posting every single day. I'm posting three to four times a day. I'm posting Plexus every single day and I'm asking all these new people to be friends and I'm like. These people are not going to want to be friends with me because I'm talking about Plexus all the time, you know? But that's actually not true and it's because I'm having actual conversations with them. So I'm going into this group and I found a huge group, so I'm only in one group. I'm not going to all the groups, like the one group. And I look for people, like you said, that are interested in the same thing I'm interested in. They look like they're friendly and they know they want to, they want to be new, you know, make new friends. And so I send them a friend request and I message them at the same time. And I say, hey, you know, I see we have this common interest and I'm always looking for new friends to talk to about this certain thing. Do you want to be friends? And more than half of them have responded to me. And that's another thing too, if you send out one friend request and somebody doesn't answer you, they're like, oh my gosh, no one wants to be my friend, you know? And that's not true. I've been sending out five friend requests every day, so I've. Sent out like fifty in the past week and half of them answered me. So twenty-five said no, but twenty-five said yes, and I'm having conversations with all these people. And what's funny about it is I had to get past a mind block about this because I did this last summer. And I made like a hundred new friends in a month. And then my brain just freaked out and I went, oh my gosh, I have a hundred new friends that are all interested in the same thing as me. And I can't talk to all these people. What am I going to do with all these friends? I mean, and so I stopped doing it. Oh, what was funny about that was that it was okay that I stopped doing it because. Over the next six months, I didn't send out a single other friend request that whole time. But that during that time, I was making relationships with all these people, I was talking to all these people, I was making friends with all these people. I'm in book Bible studies with these people now and we're promoting each other's books, you know? And I've made actual friends that I talked to, I have some of their phone numbers, you know? And so it took me a long time to be able to come back around and go, okay, it's time to go back in again. I can.
I mean, you did exactly, I mean. That's exactly what we're talking about is find people that you want genuine relationships with, that you want genuine friendships with. And these are the people that you could naturally have a conversation with and that's why it makes it so much easier and, and um. I think what you're doing now, like coming back around to it, just kind of shows like the cycle of your business, right? So people are going to move through being a complete stranger to sort of a relationship to, you know, more of a friend you're having a conversation with. And then some of them might join Plexus. And the thing is you'll get to the point where a lot of people have joined or people aren't interested and then you don't have a lot of people to talk to anymore. But what you're doing now, as in like doing a little bit as a time, you know, five a day or whatever on an ongoing basis will keep that cycle coming. So you'll always have, you know, new people to be talking to and new people to join Plexus and all of that. And it's like. A good, more, a better like maintenance mode for the business. Um, and so I think that's really good input to just goes to show that, you know, if you. If you do the steps, it really does work to bring people in. And so that's really good feedback. Thanks for sharing that. All right. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to share, questions? All right. Thank you guys so much for being here. I really want you to be proud of yourself for showing up. This is really important to come together and learn and grow and do activities together. You know, be able to ask questions and just glean knowledge off of each other and, and I appreciate you being here. Um, and thank you for allowing me to share some of the things that helped me in my business the last seven or so years. So have a wonderful night and I'll have the recording up soon. Bye, guys.